I'd like to call the order on the November sixteenth meeting of the Bryan City Board of Education. If you would start, please, and join me with the vegetable agents.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kevin, who is this?
Scott, here. Ben, here. Dad?
Here.
Dustin, here. Mike, here. Thank you.
You've all had a chance to look over in the regular meeting minutes from our October meeting. Ask for corrections, additions, discussion. Okay, hearing none, I would accept the motion to accept those minutes.
I'll make the motion to accept the minutes provided.
My second. And then?
Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Dad?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't believe there's any public participation tonight, so we will move on down to communications. Mark, is there a Ford County report today?
Yeah, Scott, so at this point, there is not a Ford County report for this month, given being a bit of a shorter month. However, I do know I can pass along that just like everyone else, they're continuing to monitor the COVID data, and they are looking forward to their fall break, starting Wednesday of next week.
Okay, great, thank you. And I'll turn it back over to you, Mark, as we highlight our student spotlight tonight.
Yeah, so we have had quite a successful fall sports season this year amongst everything else going on, all the craziness. We were able to see a ton of success on the field of play, so we have some of our record centers here with us tonight. Some of these names that you'll see on our new board down the high school hallway from the gym to the cafeteria for years to come. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna celebrate some of their successes, and we're just gonna have them step up here in front of the screen. Due to COVID, we do have a few of them that are quarantined, so they are gonna be presenting to us virtually. So we have Gwen Spangler and Coach Mel Reinhardt, and we'll get to them in a little bit. But we're gonna start with some of our in-person athletes and coaches, and Coach Savage is gonna be representing some of those coaches who are unable to attend tonight. But we're just gonna start with Josh Taylor in cross country, so Josh, why don't you come on up?
Thank you. I have Junior Joshua Taylor with me, cross country and track star. This past fall cross country season, he broke a twenty-five-year-old cross country record, Benji Ellis, from nineteen ninety-five. The old record was sixteen minutes flat, he ran a fifteen forty-seven, which is just incredible. That kind of propelled him into the league meet, on down the tournament trail where he finished. As an All-Ohio athlete, finished nineteenth in cross country state meet a week and a half ago down in Columbus. So Joshua Taylor, All-Ohio, and the cross country record holder for Bryan currently is junior. So we're hoping that we can even lower that next year. Joshua Taylor.
We'll give Coach Savage a quick break, and we're gonna move on to our girls' tennis team. So Coach Mitchell Owens is here, representing our representing girls' tennis team. Girl, why don't you come on up? Right up here.
Well, the girls' tennis team had a very successful season. We broke the team record for wins. Just as a bit of a preface to this, the girls' tennis team started in nineteen eighty-nine by Coach Julie Woodard. And since that time, sixteen wins was the big total we had to beat until about five years ago. And then we hit nineteen and twenty, and we kept hitting nineteen and twenty, and this year we broke through. We got twenty-one wins after thirty-one years. It's the highest total of wins in a season by a girls' team. That also includes the highest total of individual wins, which was ninety-five. So throughout the season, all the girls totaled ninety-five individual wins. We also had fifteen shutouts, which is just shy of the record until you guys laughed. Another record we tied from nineteen ninety-two is we sent five girls to districts. So district girls, you wanna step out? So you see who those girls are, we're missing one, contact racing. So, and then one step further, we sent two girls to state, and that's Emily Bassett, and her partner was Reese Grovehouse. They both went to state. So all in all, a fabulous season. And I'll just go down and introduce, so you guys get to know people. So Gabby Bonney, Caitlin Posey, Brooke Taylor, Katie Seaman, Emily Bassett, and Haley Wheeler. Missing are Mackenzie Adams and Reese Grovehouse. So thank you.
All right, we'll switch back over here to the football field now, so we're gonna bring it back over to Coach Savage to introduce Tybus Roar.
This one here, I needed a step ladder. Something that, you know, it's great to have six-six, two-hundred-and-thirty-ish through two-forty. Very fortunate to have mom and dad in high school then a couple of years ago, but great family, great young man that could do great things no matter what he chooses to do at a high school. But he broke two football receiving records this fall. Career TV receptions with touchdown receptions with nineteen, the previous record was fourteen, so we kind of blew that away. And that was from two thousand twelve to two thousand fourteen, so we're looking at at least a seventy-year-old record. Then career receiving yardage, fifteen sixty-seven. Again, the previous record holder was from two thousand twelve to two thousand fourteen. So again, big target, big career, gonna be difficult to replace for Coach Redhead. But even as good as he was on the football field, he's even a better person, and looking forward to big things on the basketball court this winter for Tybus Roar. Thanks, congratulations.
All right, last but not least, we're trying this for the first time ever, so Gwen and Coach Mel, you guys are officially on the big screen now, we can see you, and I hope they can hear you. So we're gonna pass it your way.
All right, if you can't hear me, let me know.
We're good.
All right, I'm here to introduce Gwen Spangler. Gwen has had an unreal career as of yet. She has set records so far in aces in a career with one-twenty-three, which the old record was ninety-eight set by Lexa Brown. She also holds her own record that she's broken, digs in a career with nine-hundred-and-twenty-four. And she's only seventy-six away right now from a thousand, which will be the first girl at Bryan volleyball to reach a thousand digs, which will be amazing in her own right. She's also part of the two-time back-to-back NWA championship teams that so far has been a vital part of. And as of recently, she also received, I will mention, All-Ohio, which is the first girl since nineteen ninety-one. Holly Scranton was the first one to get it, she's the first one since then to receive All-Ohio as a junior. So we are looking for big things from her, and hopefully to carry on that success into her senior year and keep Bryan volleyball at the top right now.
All right, very nice. All right, so with that, that concludes our celebration for our fall sports athletes. Congratulations again once to all of them. I think what we'll do is we're gonna just do a few brief administrative presentations, and then we're gonna take a break and do some pictures with our Board of Education and our fall sport athletes and the teams here. So at this point, congratulations again, and we'll turn it over to the administrators, if that's all right with you, Mr. Ambassador.
Yes.
Okay. So with that, we will start, and I gotta pull my agenda back up here, I'm gonna need you guys to hurry. Coach Reinhardt?
See ya.
And we will start with, well, Coach Savage, you're back up, if you have anything extra.
We have a whole lot else. We open up with our, schedule-wise, this coming Friday night, girls' basketball team. They have their first game, they're hosting Lake on Friday, the twentieth, at six P.M. Wrestling is scrimmaging on Saturday against Tenora Montillia in Fairview. Boys' basketball, we'll have a scrimmage at Anthony Wayne on Saturday. And bowling will open up at home, actually on the road, next Monday at Swan. Couple other things here from me is just, we are, our ticket policy for the winners is gonna be very similar to that for volleyball in the fall. Home team, when we're home, we'll have four tickets for each rostered athlete. The away team will have two tickets, and then we'll try to have some tickets available for immediate family and close friends as well. We are still at that three-hundred max capacity, though, in our gym for men's and women's tennis. So that's really all I have. Any questions for me regarding athletics?
Quick question for you.
Yes, sir.
Maybe I missed it, are we still doing the video, the same as B and U?
We are, actually for basketball, boys' and girls' basketball and wrestling, we have the Huddle Focus camera that we're gonna be able to stream. Town cards has been great, and Coach Reinhardt's been great, we streamed it for volleyball. We've been able to stream the current scrimmages for boys' and girls' basketball. We'll be able to stream them as well, the games live, hopefully with no technical difficulties, through our Bryan Athletics YouTube account. And it's turned really well, not been a while, that we're gonna be able to follow through, the scrimmages have worked well, and for our freshman JV, actually, any contest that's in the high school gym, we have the capability with that camera system.
Nothing new from boys and girls yet this year?
Nothing yet, we'll see after the state football championships this weekend and see what happens. The state finals are this weekend, and we'll see from there. Thank you, thanks, Jen.
Bring us up Mr. Bassett.
Good evening. Just have a couple items. Today I had the opportunity with being a staff in-service day to train twelve more of our staff members in the Nonviolent Crisis Intervention Program. These are our first responders when a kid is in crisis, we have a crisis in the building. Everybody else is kind of stay in status quo, these people come in and try to handle the situation. So always great that we have more people, this is a voluntary, hey, I'm gonna offer this training, who wants to come? Great to see twelve people saying, yes, this is a need, I wanna get trained, I wanna help out. And that's a yearly renewal for them, once they get the initial day training, and we do a three-hour training. And ongoing kind of throughout the year as situations arises, as situations arise, to keep them up to speed on how to best handle these situations. So we had a great group today, Joyce Bennett, they were from. We also had the opportunity today for our classified staff, we've got a speaker, name is Cecilia Rohrs. Cecily Rohrs, I always say her name wrong, Cecily Rohrs. Cecily works with poverty-stricken families and homelessness. So she's really able to talk to our bus drivers and cafeteria staff, what that looks like, we don't always recognize it, what signs to look for, and then how to help that situation. As the best we can within the power of the school, but where to lead them to some resources, what to look for when the kid's getting off the bus, and our bus driver's the number one first point of contact for those kids when they climb on the bus. And if they see some different things than maybe we see in the classroom. It's really fortunate to have her today come and work with our staff, and the population that we do have, we have need to serve those kids and better serve them. Questions, Nancy?
Yeah, a question, intervention team.
Yep.
Is that throughout the district at all levels?
It is, we have staff trained at all levels. We see most of it at the elementary, okay, for that team. Because when we talk about Nonviolent Crisis Intervention, we're doing, so there's ten chapters that teach, right? Eight of them are de-escalation, how do we get down? But when we have to physically restrain a kid, okay, Titus, I'm gonna pick on you, we're not gonna physically restrain the Titus Roar at the high school, okay? If he's gonna jump out from the bus, I'm gonna do my best to tackle him, right? He's gonna harm himself. But the elementary, then we're being able to physically intervene a little easier, right? But we have people trained at both levels, absolutely, majority of them happen to be at the elementary.
And is this batch of twelve that you just did a new batch?
It's a new batch, it is a brand new batch.
We need you, we have multiples of these.
Yes, we do, we have a team at the elementary, and you know, prior to COVID, we don't meet as much as we used to. We used to meet every month, every two months, get together, we'd talk through situations, what's come up, how did we handle it, did we handle it the right way? How can we do this better the next time? And we just kind of train and drill some things, so we're in good practice.
Good, that's great.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bassett. Next up, we have Mrs. Cox.
So good evening. We just finished up our first round of second-grade COGAT testing. Our second round is the beginning of November, or excuse me, the beginning of December, December seventh through the ninth. We also just finished up our last round of parent-teacher conferences, our only round of parent-teacher conferences. We held three different nights of conferences, the fifth, the tenth, and the twelfth. We had about a seventy-nine percent turnout rate with our parents, but given everything, we're pleased with that. We were able to not only meet face-to-face with socially distancing, but also we had phone calls and Google meets if needed as well. So I appreciate parents giving back their time to learn what's going on in the schools and what's going on with their son and daughter. The second trimester begins tomorrow here at Bryan Elementary. Report cards will go home on Friday, November twentieth. They are going home in an envelope, we do ask our parents to sign that they've seen that report card, and then they can send the envelope home, they can keep all the contents and then send the envelope home. On November eighteenth, we have our district-wide safety drill, which is this Wednesday at nine A.M. Every year, we have a practice safety drill where we're educating our children. At this level, it's done at a language that is suitable for them. It's a teaching, it's about fifteen to twenty minutes where teachers are talking, there are videos that are sent, that they can watch the video and talk about the ALICE drill. ALICE stands for the Alert, Lockdown, and Form Counter and Evacuate, but this level language is used to where our students understand. That is this Wednesday. The Scholastic Book Fair, we've not been able to have a book fair, so we're gonna try our first-ever virtual book fair. That is gonna be held November twenty-third through December seventh. Links will be shared on social media with our families and then also our elementary Facebook page. We get back from Thanksgiving break, November thirtieth through December fourth. This'll be, I couldn't remember, and maybe Mr. Arnold or Mr. Bassett, you know this, I couldn't remember if this was our tenth year or eleventh year with Christmas for Kids. But whatever year, we always make Christmas for Kids a big deal. It's a way for our students to learn to give back, to support our families here, and the money raised at the elementary stays here in Williams County. So we're super excited to beat our total from last year. So that is November thirtieth through December fourth. Makes ninety-eight point one, will be here on December first from seven to nine A.M.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Cox. And last up, we have Mr. Arnold, middle school principal.
Good evening, just wanna go over just some updates from the middle school, high school building. Today we went through professional development, Mr. Bassett mentioned doing his training. All of our teachers were able to get together and meet in departments, did a lot of good work today getting prepared for our last two days of our semester, which are a little bit different setup, especially for us at the middle school side. Talked about some scheduling issues, and then talked about even working on some twenty-one, twenty-two things of what we're looking at for next year's offering. So they had a good chance to get together and talk today, and then do a little bit of reviewing for, or from the remote learning days that we've done in school. I know you're probably aware, some districts locally have taken some days where they've done training on kids at home, done some dry runs of what remote learning might look like. We've done that with the kids in the building. Mr. Ray made a really good point about it when we talked about it, not stressing parents and childcare issues unnecessarily, you know, putting that, putting parents in tough positions. So we've done our remote training basically with kids in the building, which for teachers poses an interesting time to try to get the kids to be quiet and asking their questions through chat and email and stuff like that. But our teachers had a chance today to go back and review some things, talk about what was good, talk about what wasn't, what's working for some, what was not working for them, so I thought that was super helpful also. We've just finished up our red ribbon week, we've got Christmas for Kids that's been coming up, some good community outreach programs that our kids get a chance to get involved in. Angel Reineck, who is our licensed social worker in the building, has coordinated with some local agencies for a substance abuse awareness event that we're putting together. We reached out to our kids and to the community and asked for what some concerns were related to drug and alcohol issues, you know, what their concerns were, what their questions were. We got a lot of great feedback. Angel and Mr. Alsco and myself, we're gonna categorize those questions into some main categories and then put them into, get some general answers for each one. And then we're getting some locally trained professionals to come in and put together a video presentation that students will be able to watch, that the community be able to watch, for questions like what kind of services are available locally, inside the school, outside the school, and a number of different topics. So we think that's gonna be really good, we're excited for that. And I know Mrs. Reineck and I talked about that a little bit today, and she's got that scheduled for when some of those people are gonna come in to help us out. We've done the Veterans Day video in conjunction with B.E., maybe you had a chance to watch that last week and see that, that's available online, thanks to B and U for all their help with that, putting that together. Our orchestra, the A and E choir, are all in the process of putting, either have put concerts online, or they're going to put concerts online. I know Mr. Gordon is taking our sixth graders on Wednesday, a sixth-grade orchestra over to the A and E, do a little field trip, get their lunch, get over there, put their concert together, we'll get that put out. In this different way of doing things, Mr. Savage talked about being able to put basketball scrimmages on the Huddle. I've been able to sit at home, even though I can't watch my daughter's basketball scrimmage in person, I've been able to watch it on Huddle. And I'm not gonna lie, my couch is way more comfortable than those bleachers I was sitting at. And that has been a bad transition, and really, for I don't know how good she's even playing, I can't even tell who they are most of the time, my eyes aren't that good, so I'm just rooting for the one who's making the shots, I'll just say that for now. But it's been really nice, that's one of the things, even these concerts and everything else, if we can stream them, then we've hit this different avenue. My old, not very good at technology, parents who aren't so good, they're not gonna watch this feed to know that I just said that about them, they're able to watch the girls' scrimmage too, so that's been really awesome, that they've been able to sit at home where it's safer for them, they still get to watch a grand note at a place, that's been a good thing, and that's great for all these kids with this. We want to say congratulations to the cast and crew and Mrs. Hoover for the fault light, sounded like that was fantastic, and both of my daughters were able to attend this weekend. A seventh grader said that Katie Seaman was awesome, I heard mixed reviews, but Josie thought she was fantastic, said she did a great job, and I know both of them really had a lot of fun with it. And then the last thing that I've got is our middle school fundraiser, all three grades for, again, for really stranger, all three of our grades, the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, did a fantastic job with their fundraiser this year. We had blew some numbers out of the water from the last couple of years. All of that stuff will be delivered tomorrow, which is great, other than a lot of kids who have been contact traced are sitting at home, so we'll be creative, we'll get some parents, do some curbside delivery probably tomorrow for some people to pick up their stuff, but we think we've got a good plan in place to get that all taken care of. Any questions for middle school or high school topics? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold. And what we'll do at this point is we'll take a break, and we'll do some fun ones with the board and our student athletes, and then we'll resume our meeting from there. And everyone else after pictures is welcome to leave or stay in D.C. K.
We'll continue on, Kevin, we'll start with you with the treasurer's report.
Thank you, Scott. We begin with the patch reconciliation for the month ended October thirty-first. One deposit at Farmers Merchants, six million, seven hundred, twenty-eight thousand, five hundred, forty-seven dollars and ninety-seven cents. Outstanding checks and other adjustments of three hundred, twenty-six thousand, sixty-three dollars and forty-nine cents. Total investments of eleven million, three hundred, seventy-five dollars, one hundred, eleven million, three hundred, seventy-five thousand, one hundred, forty dollars and fifteen cents. Seven thousand, five hundred dollars on hand and paid cash and change funds for a total fund balance of seventeen million, seven hundred, eighty-five thousand, one hundred, twenty-four dollars and sixty-three cents. Additionally, the customary financial reports are in your packet, I will highlight, the general fund balance is eleven million, five hundred, fifty-three thousand, five hundred, twenty-one dollars and seventy-two cents. Bond retirement fund stands at two million, four hundred, twenty-two thousand, one hundred, seventy-two dollars and forty-two cents. I will note that most of our bond payments are due either mid-December or the first day of January, so that's been ready to make its payments. And the permanent improvement fund sits at two million, one hundred, ninety-six thousand, seven hundred, fifty-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents. Moving on, I have just a few recommended appropriation changes for you this year totaling an increase of thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. In the general fund, we're making an adjustment to pay the University of Toledo its site extern fee as part of the program where they provide us an extern who's working with our school psych department, the cost of that's twelve thousand, six hundred dollars. We've also had a twenty-two thousand dollar increase in the band fund for the band trip. That expenditure is completely offset by money which has been brought in through student payments for that trip. And additionally, another twenty-five hundred dollars for the class of twenty-twenty-two, which was the cost of their fundraising expense, and they may have, of course, covered that cost and raised money through that. Those were the major changes, again, that totals thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred, fifty-five dollars, one of our smaller months for changes and appropriations. Additionally, we want to recognize the following gifts, three thousand, four hundred, forty-six dollars from Zach Isaac on behalf of the Isaac Memorial Fund via the Bryan Area Foundation for the Student Assistance Fund. Three thousand, one hundred, ninety-nine dollars from the athletic boosters for track uniforms. Four hundred dollars from the athletic boosters for swim caps. Five hundred dollars from the academic boosters for technology scholarships, and three hundred, forty-seven dollars from the academic boosters as a grant for Brooklyn School. And moving on, for the five-year forecast, I have included for you a quite detailed report under exhibit E, which actually goes through and breaks down in some detail the history of each of the line items, and some explanation of how we got there. I'm gonna leave that, I'm not gonna go through that in detail tonight. You have questions, I'll be glad to go through it in more detail with you, but we're gonna focus on the actual forecast itself. We're in unusual times right now with COVID, and we're at one of also the difficult periods just in forecasting school financing anyways, given that the state of Ohio works in two-year budgets. So we are six months out from the next cycle of two-year budgets. And on top of that, introduced just in the past two weeks at the General Assembly was the School Fair Funding Act, which is a bill that would fundamentally change how the state's assistance to the local school districts is calculated. Which would change it, right now, we are funded on a per pupil model, where the state says it costs around six thousand dollars per student to educate a student, and the change would go more to a classroom-based, facilities-based model that says, what does it take to educate the group of students? And it would eliminate a lot of this issue where we have with open enrollment, we care a lot about where the kid lives, not where they're getting educated, the new system would just look at where the kids are getting educated, to very much simplify open enrollment and a lot of those things. So school financing in years two, three, four, and five, it's always a guessing game, but right now, it's just very unclear where we're going in those years. So we have chosen for the most part, just to basically hold those amounts steady. We know that we're getting very modest increases in property taxes, valuations are going up, and we've included modest increases as we run through that six-year cycle of property valuation. Our income tax, we saw a big reset this year over the summer through, you know, the drop down from COVID. We saw a very strong bounce back in October, to where our withholdings were only down two percent from the previous October. They were down twelve percent in July, so that is a significant increase, and we're hoping to see that that holds steady as a trend. So we basically viewed our income tax as a hard reset, but then we have continued what is historically three-point-one percent growth per year in income tax from this new level. So rather than projecting a bounce back in growth, we've taken this as a new starting point and are growing the income tax from there. State aid, we've just basically held flat, like I said, it's just very difficult for us to know where it's going. And so we've just chosen to assume the state's not going to take any money away from us. We've assumed that we're gonna go back to what was originally scheduled, the seven-point-seven million dollars. that we're going to go back to what was originally scheduled, the $7.7 million. That's what we should have received last fiscal year, what we should have received this fiscal year under the original budget pre-COVID. So we're just taking that as a baseline and holding it steady. If fair funding is passed the way that it stands now, it has a six-year phase-in period, then we might see our state funding grow from $7.7 million to in excess of $11 million over a six-year period, which would be a significant benefit to our district, obviously. But it remains to be seen. This is not the first attempt to pass fair school funding. We're very hopeful. We're being very supportive of the effort. We think it's a better plan, not just because we receive more money, but we think it's fundamentally a better way of thinking about how to fund education in the state of Ohio. But it's also not clear if we're to pass, how exactly we would base them, other than this plan to be a six-year period. And so it might be split evenly, like throughout the year it might be backwards, and we just don't know right now. So we've just held it steady, given the uncertainty in state funding. Property tax allocation, you can see, has come down significantly. The main reason why this has dropped down in the past, what is the loss of tangible personal property tax revenue. When the state instituted back in 2007, the personal activity tax, they got rid of the tangible personal property tax which schools received. They replaced that money and then started very slowly taking that replacement away. By fiscal '22, we are down $21,000 of that tangible personal property tax replacement. And then fiscal '23, we will be gone completely. What remains is property rollback from our existing levies and home state exemptions. Other revenues, again, you see a quite a sharp decrease attributable primarily to the loss of rent for the Arts and Education Building, Fountain City, Christian Closing, which accounts for $150,000 a year, and also the loss of interest on our fund balance as we are drawing down the fund balance. We look down into personnel expenditures. You'll notice that this year, we actually are slightly down from 13.25 to 13.21 in wages and labor costs. The reason for that is we have decided to use the Student Wellness and Success Funds to support salaries of some of our faculty that are providing that. So even though we did a 2.5% increase basically in our labor contracts, both between BDA and OC, pulling those individuals off of the general fund pulls them out of this forecast and into funds that aren't represented. We're using two years' worth of funds basically this year. So next year, we are assuming that we're going to get student wellness again. We're assuming we're going to keep those staff on that wellness fund. But we'll go back to only getting a one-year's portion. So part of the reason why you see such a sharp increase from 3.2 to 3.8 is we are bringing back about a third of the people that we put on student wellness back to the general fund next year where they will stay going forward, because we're going back to just funding a year's worth of people on student wellness. It's the same explanation on why you see such a small growth pattern of benefits from last year to this year and this year to next year, is that movement of personnel to student wellness and then bringing some of it back. Purchase services, you see the increase from 3.1 million last year to about 3.3 million this year. Some of that is going, is just attributable to COVID, some of which is potentially going to get pulled back to the COVID grants that we have. But we're kind of waiting to see what fits best for those grants. And we're going to allocate those costs in the future for that. The purchase services are where we're paying somebody to do something, right? And so it also includes some of our special education costs, where we are farming out specific activities to other districts and other education authorities to help us with some of our specialty kids. And the supplies and materials, you're also seeing an increase there, you know, for the same reason where, you know, it's just taking more things to do school this year. And so we're seeing some increased costs there. Going down at other use, operating transfers out, $700,000. That did represent us that money that we approved initially as an advance. It's still technically just an advance to the cafeteria fund. We're still waiting to kind of get a feel for where that's going to settle out. We're much more positive that we're going to do okay in the food service fund, given that we've gone to the full free lunches. We're getting quite a bit in reimbursement now. And so we saw our packing rate kind of go up at the beginning of the year. And now people, you know, everybody loves a free lunch, right? So we're getting a lot of people running through that free lunch program. And that's been a real help to us because we have the staff in the cafeteria basically the same, whether people are packing a lot or they're not, because we have to be ready to serve. And so serving a good portion of ours to the population helps us offset those staff. So we're positive there. So that brings us to an estimated deficit spending this year of $3.134 million. That is an increase in deficit spending from $1.6 million, again, primarily attributable to loss of revenue more than increases in expenditures. Our expenditures only went up by $400,000, give or take, from '22 to '25, '22 to '29. But our revenues went down from $21 million to $19.9 million. So it is primarily a loss of revenue that is causing this significant increase in deficit spending, which we hope to see turn around as I just described before. So we are, we started with $10.9 million in the general fund beginning year. That will spin us down to $7.7 million. Again, we are now projecting, scroll down a little bit there, Mr. Bassett, or Mr. Berry, sorry. With the levy renewal coming online, that's the emergency levy, which is up for renewal in fiscal '23, we are expecting to see fiscal '23 would end in the red, $300,000. Of course, we do not have authority to end in the red. We will have to do something at that point if the revenues do not come around to make sure that we do not overspend the general fund. Any questions on the forecast?
Kevin, you said you are getting reimbursements for the free lunches?
Yes, that's right. We've received $86,000 for October from the federal government through the Seamless Summer Program.
Are they comparing to normal?
In a normal year, our free reduce would be about $45,000 to $50,000 a month. So it's significantly more.
Are we breaking even in the category? That was my question, to go along with that. Before, it used to be breaking even or?
It's, it's going to be close. I, I think we're probably not going to break even, but now that we're on this free lunch, I think it's going to be a lot closer to breaking even. I was very concerned about it earlier in the year. I'm less concerned now. We need a little bit more data before we're going to be able to really project.
Will you give more reimbursements for November, December?
Yeah, yeah. The reimbursements are based on actual lunches served. So at the end of, on the last day of service every month, Mr. Bassett goes in and files and lets us know how many lunches we served for the month, and then we receive reimbursement for each lunch served.
Great. Good. So I don't know if this is the point to ask this question, or to talk about the trip, the band, that funded, the month.
Yes.
Is that something we're still moving forward with?
So we've set a date, Mr. Berry may have it more precisely in his mind. But we have set a date in December where administration and band director are going to sit down and make a final decision. We've actually delayed, there would have been another payment from students due in November, and we've delayed that payment subject to that final decision. So we will be making a final decision about a month on whether or not we're going to go on that trip, which is just a little bit ahead of the deadline to get back the money for the trip that's been paid. So, so yeah, we have not made a final decision, but we're getting close to that decision.
And they're still planning on going to Toronto, Toronto's a trip location, yes, correct. And order to make sure they're all coordinated, really, let, let. So we're going to have to really assess in the next month to see what happens. I mean, all signs point in, you know, the direction of it's going to be very tough to make that possible. But we want to give our students every opportunity to see what happens here over the course of time. So.
And just as a reminder, the reason why we've gone this far down this path to begin with is our music department is on a four-year cycle for trips. And so we're trying to not let the seniors miss out on what is a once-in-a-high-school opportunity. And so that's why we're fighting for it and letting it live as long as we can.
Any other questions for Kevin?
And that's all I have for you.
All right. Thank you, Kevin. Then I would accept a motion to approve the treasury reports and recommendations.
I'll make a motion to accept those recommendations.
Thank you, Kevin.
I'll second that.
You're right.
Ben?
Yes.
Dad?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Thank you.
Looking at the agenda, doesn't look like there's any old business. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I'd be remiss if we didn't talk just shortly about COVID. Just, we send out district updates nearly every day at this point, including the recent data. We are learning that the COVID cases, the positive cases and the quarantines that go along with it for the close contacts, very much come and go in big waves. So we did see, we are really a replica of spikes that happen in the community. So our numbers traditionally were very low in the first months of the school year, back in August and September. But back at the beginning of October, we started to see more cases arise in the community and the county. And therefore, we started to see the trickle effect of more cases come into the school system. What we are seeing is the cases are not spreading in a school system. And this is consistent amongst most schools in Ohio and if not most schools everywhere. What we're seeing is that cases contracted from outside of school events, maybe a small family gathering, maybe a get-together at a public place. And then someone who is infected there may not realize that they have the virus, because it does take two to four to five, upwards of 14 days to actually contract at times. And they come into the school then, which creates a challenging situation for all schools because our students are doing a really good job. So are our staff members. When they feel that first onset of symptoms, they are taking themselves out of the school then. So if someone gets a headache at 2:00 PM, they're usually out the door by 2:15. The challenge with the coronavirus is you have to do contact tracing for 48 hours prior to the onset of symptoms. So if a student has a headache at 2:00 PM on a Wednesday, you don't have to go back to Monday to do all of your contact tracing. Meanwhile, that student during those 48 hours was more likely feeling pretty good. The symptoms had not really hit them at that point. So they had no suspicion that they were going to be creating a situation in which they were in close contact with an individual. So our students and our staff are doing a really nice job of keeping their distance, which is in your daily movements throughout the day. Maybe you're working on a group assignment at times, athletics, bus riding, and then maybe outside of school gatherings as well, can really start to pile up the close contact list. So referring to the waves that we've seen, we did see our spike hit very high last week. We went from two cases the week prior to last week to 13 in the district at one point last week. And the number is hard to read because when someone is active, they're active for 10 days. So some of those cases are active on days seven, eight, nine, you're doing the data. Others are active on days one and two. But that's a kilo total during that active time span of the virus. As we stand today, right now, we are actually at five active cases. And that represents 0.2% of our student population. So we are based off of 1,900 students that are sitting in our chairs every day in the district. So we have five active cases. And actually, I think we're learning on the sixth as we speak right now, which is kind of the trend. But there's currently zero active staff cases. So all of our staff that have been on quarantine for positive cases have now fulfilled their 10 days, and they're back in the classrooms tomorrow. And most of them were back today as well. So it does, when the close contacts and the situations that we see, we're going to enter back in, into the classrooms tomorrow after a three-day weekend with 11 staff members on quarantine and approximately 195 students on quarantine. That number, 195 of the students, represents just about 10%, just under 10%. And the 11 staff members is 3.6% of the staff. So we're monitoring this very closely. A lot of those quarantines for the students will come back midweek this week. So that number 195 could potentially be sliced in half. But what happens between now and Wednesday when they come back, we could be adding teams as well for close contacts. But what we've seen now is as we've had some cases where we've had some high numbers of close contacts, it's a reminder for all of us to be vigilant and keep our space, that six-point distance to adhere to, because that's all the CDC and Ohio Department of Health guidelines that we follow. And that's implemented by Williams County Health Department. So we do follow that for appropriate protocol, because none of us want to have any responsibility for a spread. And again, because I think we are diligent in following those, even though it does lead to those contact tracing scenarios, we are able to really slow and limit any spread within the schools. So that is very promising to know that we're doing our part to limit that spread. However, data can change quickly. As Mr. Arnold noted, we are having our staff at all levels, grades pre-pay through 12, always prepare our students for remote learning. Again, we never know what situations we may be faced with each day. We don't know at the state level what decisions are made. So we have to prepare for the unknown in many times. We have full support of many people to remain with our in-person learning. However, we are remaining safe, and that's our ultimate goal. So we want to be able to provide our students with opportunities to learn in person, participate in all the activities that they have, from extracurriculars and athletics. And we just had a phenomenal fall play take place. And it's all a result of us being able to provide our in-person education, which we want to continue to see. So, but we also need to remember remaining safe. So in the coming days, I know the state, the nation, is facing the coronavirus spike. So we're going to continue to monitor that and how that affects us here at Bryan Street Schools. And we will communicate with all of our stakeholders effectively as to what information needs to be known and make appropriate decisions as we get through each and every day.
Well, Mark, I just want to tell you, I think I speak for the board. I just wanted to acknowledge you for your efforts and the way you handled this, you know, situation. And none of us, you know, really, it's a learning curve every day. I think you've done a fantastic job. You're very transparent, communicating very effectively with all the stakeholders, parents, the community, the board. I think you did a really, really good job. I just want to thank you for that.
Well, I appreciate that. And it's, it doesn't, it's not just one person. It takes a team. We have great people, doing a lot of great things, helping us through this process every day. So we thank you for that.
I think you're all doing a great job.
There's a lot of stuff happening on weekends too, on personal time. It's one we appreciate, right? There's a lot of time we do that on Sunday. It's been, it's good.
Yeah, it takes a lot of time, too.
Thanks, Mark.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you.
So fingers crossed we'll come back to school and hold those after vacation.
Great question. So right now, based on the, we have four days of school remaining until we hit our Thanksgiving break. We're hoping that that will give us nine days to get a lot of staffing and students back off quarantine. If we do experience any positive cases this week, then we'll hopefully give them enough time to fulfill their 10 days. Because if their positive is 10, their close contact is 14, enough time to ride those out and then come back fresh, if you will, on Monday, November 30th. We have those three weeks between Thanksgiving and Christmas. So at the same time, this is a busy week because we are monitoring what's happening at the state level. We're going to continue to monitor our, I'm sorry, we're going to continue to prepare our students and staff for whatever lies ahead, because information can even change while we're enjoying our time off as well. So we'll make everyone just aware of the information that's at hand, to be prepared for whatever lies ahead. But our goal is, as we've stated all along, is to continue to try and provide that in-person education. But again, if a safety decision has But again, if a safety decision has to be made, then we'll make the appropriate decision to keep our students and our staff safe.
Okay. Moving on to new business. I don't think there's any that I see on the agenda, so we'll go into, Mark, your superintendent's recommendations.
Yeah, I have a fairly short list tonight.
Good.
Our first one, our first one is an agreement with the University of Toledo, much like we did with Defiance College earlier this year. We have some student teachers who need some placements, and this allows them to get their practical experiences with us here in districts. So that's just an agreement between us and the University of Toledo to allow those students to fulfill their student fishing duties with Bryan City Schools.
Okay. I would accept a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation on the University of Toledo affiliation agreement.
I would make that motion that we accept the superintendent's recommendations.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Ben.
Thank you, Dustin.
Devin?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, let's move into a short list of personnel recommendations. We have one addition to the classified substitute list, we have one addition to the certified substitute list, we have a movement on the salary schedule for Jacob Stewart for achieving his master's degree, so congratulations to him. We are turning into effective unpaid legal assets for a bus driver with Mr. Bex. And we have, this is an annual action in Lundy, the fall non-renewal supplemental contracts of our non-certificated staff. So this is an annual action not based on performance. This is an annual action which will be non-renewed and then, in a later month, renewed, if they so desire.
Any questions for Mark on those personnel recommendations? Okay, so hearing them, I would take a motion to accept the personnel recommendations from our superintendent.
I move to accept those personnel recommendations.
Okay, Ben, thank you. Thank you, Mike.
Dustin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Devin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now move on down to points of integration. You want me to do this, Mark, or you want me?
Either way, whenever you're.
Go ahead.
Okay. Yep, so just a few dates listed here. Our next Board of Education meeting is scheduled for the 21st, and this seems to be working well here, so we'll continue right here at the Commons, and that'll start at 7:00 PM. We have on the horizon, the January Board of Education organizational and regular meeting, scheduled for January 4th, and it's upcoming right after the entering of the new year. It'll be back in here at 7:00 PM. This week on Wednesday, we have our Second Order Business Advisor Council meeting, so we look to get, look forward to getting together. Mike Stockton joined that committee with us, and we can get together with our community business representatives, and it's always good discussion. And then we are still waiting the next date of the Local Professional Development Committee that takes place here at the school.
Thanks, Mark. And just for the boards, the reason we're doing that January 4th meeting, organizational, is you remember, we've got to have that done by the 15th of the month, so that was the best one. We all talked about this, but that also builds in for whether delays or weather related issues, if we can't get it, we still have some time to do that.
We've got to go with that January 4th, and it's going to be early, Mike.
That's the way it falls. Okay. Is there a reason to go into executive session?
Yes, I'm aware of a reason to enter into executive session to discuss the compensation of the employee.
Okay. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Good. I'll make that go into executive session.
Thank you, Dustin. Thank you, Mike.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Devin?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Thank you.